All right, if I could have everybody's attention, please. I'd like to call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order at 7:01. Ask everyone to please either silence your cell phones or shut them off, put them on vibrate. Today's the 7th, and a public hearing is coming to order. These petitions advertised for this session, or those who are not familiar with our process, these petitioner will be designated representative and present their case. You can remove your mask while you're speaking at the... If there's any... then I'm going to ask if anyone's in favor of against, for, or against your petition, and we don't allow clapping or shouting, which won't be an issue tonight. All right, with that said, the first item on the agenda is continued from last month, Barnum Avenue Cut Off, and I'd ask Mr. Forrester to read it into the record.
725-735-771, Barnum Avenue Cut Off, the petition of M.A.R.L. Properties LLC, C.B.M. Group LLC, and B.A.C.O. 727 LLC, seeking a site plan review and variances of Section 10.2.1.2 to erect six additional small self-storage buildings on the property that customers can directly access themselves, in conjunction with the previously approved 10 193-square-foot self-storage building located on 735 Barnum Avenue Cut Off, which are all located in an MA zone. The hardship stated is the strict application of the regulations would cause exceptional difficulty and unusual hardship unnecessary to the general purpose of the zoning regulations, and will deprive the applicants of reasonable use of the property.
All right, that was tabled as a public portion at our last meeting. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to remove from the table.
Motion by Commissioner Forrester is our second. Second by Commissioner Streets.
A point of order?
Yes.
I believe Mr. Forrester made himself familiar with the prior proceedings, and it would be good to get that on the record.
That is correct. I reviewed the tape as provided, the link provided by the zoning administration.
All right, all those in favor of removing you off the table signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is John Nuff. I'm an attorney with an office on 147 Broad Street, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the three applicants. I believe, just as a quick point of order, so we have five full commission members who are hearing this? Okay, terrific. Okay, terrific. Because I know the first night there was only four, so good to hear. I don't want to, maybe in the spirit of the season, I don't want to bury the lead, but since the last meeting, my client and I and our professional engineer have met with our neighbor, Justin Ream, on a couple of occasions and reviewed, frankly, videos of rain, and we've looked at site plans and looked at cross-sections, and we have been able, and I'm happy to report, to resolve our differences with regard to the drainage issues that Mr. Ream had expressed to you before. He's here tonight to support the application, which I think we can all agree is wonderful news. On the issue of drainage, I know that's not relevant to this commission's jurisdiction, but just as a reminder, we did supply to you an email exchange between the town engineer, John Casey, and Chris Cardney of Langen Engineering, that's where Langen is my client's engineer for this project, saying that Mr. Casey is satisfied with our design, and as you know, that we have received approval from the Inland Water Commission, not only for this application, but for the main self-storage facility at 7071 Barnum Avenue. You'll recall, for those who, it's been a couple of months since we started this, this is an application for a variance because of the interpretation of your zoning regulations that we're only allowed one principal building use on this property, and I had pointed out at the first night of this public hearing, the unique conditions of this property that lead to the hardship request. I know that Commissioner Young had asked me, I explained that first night, that we are going to be before you in one context or another, either here for a variance of more than one principal building, or more than one primary use on a lot, or we'd be here before you as an, in an appeal from Mr. Hibansky's decision that my client's proposal would not meet the zoning requirements. Commissioner Young had asked the difference between the, whether the ZBA can vary your regulations or interpret the regulations. In this context, we're asking you to vary the regulations. If we were here as a challenge to the decision of the zoning enforcement officer, we'd be asking you to interpret them. We're not asking you to interpret regulations. As part of this application, we're asking you to vary your regulations with regard to this application. So I'd be happy to run through all the exhibits we had from, you know, the past couple of months, or answer any questions, but I think that's a good enough summary, and let you ask questions as you might.
Thank you. Questions from commissioners? Commissioner Young?
Thank you, Mary Young, for the record. Since you're reminiscing about where we've been to where we got to now, I believe a third option for your client could have been a text amendment before the zoning commission to modify the regulations to allow explicitly accessory buildings. So that was an option, I believe, the planning administrator identified was available to you.
That was discussed, and let's face it, many towns are concerned about regulation amendments that are tied to a specific application or property for fear that it may trigger something else on a property elsewhere. Different towns have different philosophies about amending their regulations. There are some like Stanford that, you know, are constantly modifying, amending their regulations for site-specific areas. There are other towns, I think Stratford and Orange and others, that are very reluctant to do so. So that option was discussed as well, and the determination was made that, obviously, that variance application made the most sense.
Just to confirm, determination made by you and your client?
In consultation with town staff, yes.
So going back to what you shared with us this evening, that there have been, if I understood correctly, conversations with the neighbor who previously expressed concern?
Yes.
And if I heard you correctly, you summarized that there has been progress?
Yes.
In terms of his being more satisfied now than he was previously?
Yes.
Can you summarize, perhaps, what has changed between then and now to make him more satisfied, based upon your plans or representations or other means?
Well, again, I don't want to get into too many details, because frankly, I don't think they're relevant to the variance application, but his primary concern was drainage and whether drainage from the newly developed sites was coming onto his property, and we looked at, as I said, we looked at videos, we looked at site plans, we had ASBIL surveys done, we looked at the elevations of those surveys, and confirming that the drainage was working as it had originally been proposed when we first did the first building at 771, and so that's the basis for the agreement between the property owners.
Thank you. I would prefer, if you didn't tell me what isn't my jurisdiction, rather acknowledge that I believe myself and other alleged officials are concerned about impacts to neighboring property owners.
Okay.
And the issue was raised by those neighboring property owners, so in response, we query to find out more, to make sure they have a voice at the table. So if I understood correctly, nothing has actually changed with respect to your plans, but rather you demonstrated, in your view, that what has previously been approved is working, and therefore shouldn't impact him to his detriment? Is that correct?
Correct. And as you'll recall, the area for the proposed sort of standalone self-storage buildings are located on the opposite side of the main self-storage unit from where Mr. Ream's property is located. But yes, we confirmed that the drainage is operating as it was intended to operate when it was first constructed in 2017 or so.
So we will have a forum later in this meeting for the neighbors to speak, and I thank you for answering my questions.
Okay.
Other commissioners have questions? Hearing none, what is your pleasure? Close the public hearing?
Team, do you hear for the public?
Well, yeah, you're all set? Anyone wish to speak in favor? State your name, address for the record.
Justin Ream, 825 Barnum Avenue Cut Off. We are the neighbor. We had a few main concerns that I expressed to you last time. We are all under the, well, long story short, the curb cut issue is something that is a state issue, as we understand, and it really cannot be rectified. We're going to try and divert the traffic where it needs to go, which we had discussed, but we understand that we can't fix everything. Regarding the drainage, we did meet on-site with the engineer, and we came up with a solution to make sure the water that we are getting is diverted through the property, back to the retention pond, so we don't have the buildup and the water issues we have in the back. And once again, we understand there's a difference between flood and rainwater. Nobody can guarantee we don't have a flood again, but I appreciate Mr. Bildner, attorney enough, and engineer, taking the time and putting their best foot forward to find a solution that works for us with where we are right now, to make sure this has little impact on our business. So.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Hearing none, what is the commissioner's pleasure to close it?
Motion to close this portion of the public hearing.
Mr. Forrester, seconded by Commissioner Young. All's in favors? Opposed? Public portion is closed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Young, would you read the next one? Again, this one was tabled and left open for the public.
Mary Young for the record. Mary Young for the record, 170 Orin Oak Lane, Petition of Unique Way Inc., seeking to appeal the planning and zoning administrators' denial to issue a building permit to 11 single-family homes in an RS-1 zone. Hardship, building permit denied. Mr. Chairman?
Anyone wish to take it off the table?
Mary Young, motion to take it off the table.
Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Off the table.
Okay. Good evening. For the record, I'm Attorney Stephen Bellis, and I represent the current owner of Bluebird Prestige Inc. As you may recall, I discussed a little bit about this case last time, but I know you might not all remember all the details, but basically, there was an approval for an 11-unit condominium. Extensions were obtained by Mr. Nick Owen to get a building permit with that special permit. The last one that he obtained was on 2018, and in that particular extension, the new deadline was set to obtain a building permit for this project as August 19, 2019. And in my memo that I gave to Attorney Patricia Sullivan, and I think I mailed a copy to Jay Hibansky, and I can give you one for the record in a minute, that was attached as Exhibit A. So the long and the short of it is, the applicant had until August 19, 2019, and it's underlined and in bold letters, "to obtain a building permit for this project." So with that understanding, on June 29, Nick Owen went to get a building permit, and to get a building permit, the first thing they do is they make you go to zoning and say, okay, are you, do you comply with zoning? And in this particular case, Jay Hibansky wrote a letter on July 3, and said that because final plans were never submitted or approved by the zoning commission, the site plan is null and void. And I put his little, I guess you'd call that an email, attached as Exhibit B. So after that was done, we went to court 13 days later and said to the judge, listen, there's no discretion here, no one's asking to overturn anything, we just want the building, the zoning official, to tell the building inspector that there is a special permit, that there is an extension. That's all we, that's all we want, that's all we asked. And then we asked the court to order that the building inspector issue the building permit. The court wrote a decision, and the court said that, and I have the decision, just at least the conclusion, they said, well, we're going to grant the town's motion to dismiss without prejudice. And what that means, and he cites a case, the judge does, he says, because failure to exhaust, because failure to exhaust can be remedied through pursuit of administrative process, a dismissal for failure to exhaust available administrative remedies should be without prejudice. So the judge is explaining, hey, listen, maybe you can resolve this with the ZBA, and I don't have to decide whether to issue a mandamus or not. So we came before you, and we filed our application stating that, I don't, that simply the ZBA does have the power under 8-7 to correct any errors that a zoning enforcement officer may have made. And that's what we're asking this. We're not asking for a variance, we're not asking anything that requires a hardship. It's simply for you to look at the facts, and they're not, there's only a couple of facts that are really important. One is the permit being extended until August 2019. Nick Owen can testify that he went in on June 19, June 29, 2019, before it expired, and that Jay wrote the email that caused the building inspector not to issue the permit. It's really not more complicated than that. So I have the conclusion from the judge saying it's done without prejudice, and he explains what without prejudice means, and I have my memo that I wrote to Attorney Sullivan, basically stating the case, stating what I've told you. I made it a little more legal, because it was going to her, so I included some cases, and the cases that I cited basically say, hey, you can go to, at least some of the cases say, you can request a mandamus without going to the zoning board of appeals, because sometimes it's faster and you don't have an adequate remedy. And there's also cases that say the zoning board of appeals can be compelled by a mandamus to hear an appeal from a decision of the zoning enforcement officer. I don't think that the court went that far in our case, ordering you people to hear the case. He simply said, hey, look at, this is being done without prejudice, and the reason, and without prejudice means you can, you have to exhaust your administrative remedies, and what that means is come to you. I mean, that's what he's saying to me in legalese. So I did come to you as soon as I could, and, I don't know, that's where we are. I have, I don't know, how do I hand this in? Right to the, yeah. I would like to, just for the record, get Nick to testify that he did submit the final maps, and that's in your file. I think that Nick asked that the commission open up its files, and he found those maps, so they're in your files, and to testify that he went to see the building inspector on June 29. So can I do that? It'll take two seconds.
Just give me your, yeah, you can just give me your name for the record.
I've done this once or twice. Mr. Chairman, Madam Secretary, ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Zoning Appeals, for the record, my name is Nicholas Owen. I resided for Whipper Will Lane here in Stratford, and I was the driving force behind filing the initial petition on this project a number of years ago. To give you a little brief background to where we got to where we are today, initially, this was, this project was known as Orin Oak 15, Y. Orin Oak 15. It was known as Orin Oak 15 because we had proposed 15 houses on this particular piece of property in conjunction with a change in the zoning regulation. Now, I point a change in the zoning regulation for the mere fact that there was no regulation that allowed small developments in the north end of Stratford. And we were fortunate enough at the time, and I don't recall the year, we came before the zoning commission, and the zoning commission adopted that regulation, which allowed us to submit that application for 15 houses, i.e. Orin Oak 15. The board denied the application. We took the board, which is our right, to the court, and finally, after a number of months, it could have been up to a year, we negotiated a settlement with the town, through the town attorney's office and through the zoning board, that we would reduce the number of units on this project from 15 to 11. So the current project as it stands, there's 11 units. Over the years, we had asked for a number of extensions. The first request, and I'll submit that into evidence shortly, was a request to extend the time period for getting final approval, and that is the question. We submitted maps to the zoning commission. They are, maps are in the file. Now, they are not specifically marked final plans, there's no question about that. However, all of the comments from all of the departments reference those maps or that particular plat, and indicate there were no issues. We complied with the engineering, we complied with the health department, we complied with the police department, and with the fire department, and you will note, if you take a look at that plan, and I will submit it into evidence, that all of that information is on the plan, and there's no negative comments. Sometime thereafter, we figured we were done with it. Sometime thereafter, we requested an extension to pull a building permit, which we are allowed to under the regulations. That was granted. Further down the road, when the time was coming to either extend the building permit again, to ask permission to extend it, or pull the building permit, we asked for another extension, which was granted. I believe we came in for a third time, and another extension was granted. Well, it stands to reason that if we asked for an extension to pull a building permit, it would assume, we would assume, the commission would assume, that all of the regulations and requirements were met under the initial approval, and that's what we are basing our argument on. Now, I had asked initially for Mr. Brennan to bring the original files, so we can put those original files in the record, and I'm not sure whether he did or he did not.
No, I did not.
And is there a reason why you didn't bring them, so they could be submitted officially into the record, sir?
Yeah, as I mentioned to you prior to the last meeting, if you wanted copies of anything in the files, you were more than welcome to come into our office, and we would make you copies of the plans or applications.
And what did you do upon my request?
At the last meeting, we made you a, I believe it was a $75 packet of applications, where you did not request any plans.
Mr. Chairman, are we having a debate here? Are we...
No, we're not. I have the right to ask the officials a question, because I'm trying to elicit a response. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, let me finish my thought, and then you can chastise me if you like. Mr. Brennan did, in fact, upon my request, which we paid for, copies of each individual document and two different sets of applications for this particular piece of, this project, and I'm going to enter those into an exhibit. Now, the reason why I asked for original copies is sometimes the court will not take copies of anything, but since we are not allowed to remove the originals from the zoning office, is that correct, sir?
Yes, correct.
My best evidence in court, if we have to go, are copies, and I would like to submit those two packets from two separate files into the record as an exhibit.
Mr. Chairman, a point of order. I believe this matter was held open so that the zoning board of appeals, at the meeting on November 3, the board granted Attorney Bellis, representing the petitioner, the opportunity to submit a memorandum addressing the timeliness of the client. So this seems like they're going through a whole nother process, but that was the issue that was before the board for this meeting.
Yeah, but we did keep the public portion open, so it does give them the right to present it again or present some new information. The only thing I would say is, you can question our zoning person, but the commissioner should be asking the questions. In other words, you could say, why didn't you do this? Why didn't you do that? But then it's up to one of the commissioners to question.
Mr. Chairman, I understand, and I don't do it in an abrasive manner. I know I have a loud-speaking voice, and I sound rough.
You certainly do.
But I'm certainly not, I certainly have no animosity toward anybody on the zoning commissions or in the official office. I've been doing this for 52 years, and you don't do it for 52 years to make enemies. So I apologize if I sound rough. I'm really a pussycat at heart. Anyway, I would like to submit yet again for the record, a copy of the map, and the applications, and the extensions for this building permit, and the approvals that are in the file. I'd like to enter this packet in as an exhibit. Further, I'd like to enter into the record a copy of the recorded approval, which, once it's recorded on the land records, it becomes real forever and ever, along with the comments that were made at each one of those public hearings and administrative sessions to grant the extensions to pull a building permit, and you are looking at a set of documents in three different packets. I'd like to submit all of those in as an evidence. And lastly, a copy of the application and the request for the extension of a building permit, which we pulled in a timely manner, and I'd like to enter this into the record as an exhibit. I will tell you, when we received the denial, and I'll conclude my remarks, the denial stated three reasons. One, that we did not submit our final plans, which we obviously disagree with, and that's the reason we're here. Two, that our wetlands permit for this project had expired, which it did not, has not, and is still in full force and effect. And thirdly, that we did not build the project in a timely manner, even though to me, that's an argument that really doesn't belong to the zoning commission. As long as we have approval and extensions, we can build it at any point during that period of time. When I spoke with Mr. Hibansky, who is a gentleman, and he's very cordial to me most of the time, unless he's throwing me out of his office, that I, and he suggested to me that I turn around and refile the application. Well, interestingly enough, that section of the regulation was voted out. I find it very curious that the board denies the extension, and the regulation was voted out, and then it was suggested that I refile an application. It didn't make much sense to me. I don't see anything leathery in his comment. Maybe he wasn't aware at the time that it was voted out, or maybe he thought I was going to file another application. But I feel through the years, we have, I have, have complied with all of the regulations in order for us to pull a building permit, and therefore, I respectfully request that you overturn the denial and have the zoning office sign off on our application, so we can pull our building permit and get started with this project. And I thank you. And if there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Commissioners' questions? Commissioner Young?
Thank you. So I'm in possession of a memorandum prepared by Attorney Patricia Sullivan dated today, December 7. I don't know if your attorney or you have a copy?
We do.
To her point a few minutes ago about why are we here on, I think, the third round of this, she, I believe correctly and succinctly, identified that we have a timing question here. Setting aside all the facts and the years spent by you and others getting to this point, we have a very specific statutory time period, which she was successful in tracking, to determine whether or not your request before this board this evening is ripe. And in her conclusion, she finds it is not ripe. And I believe I asked the question last time, did she, was she looking for us as a board to determine whether or not we think it's ripe? And I believe she answered in the affirmative. If I'm allowed to ask, Ms. Sullivan, am I correct?
That's correct.
Attorney Sullivan, you perceive the appropriate action for this board is to determine whether or not this appeal of the planning and zoning administrators' decision is ripe for consideration? And once we render a conclusion, should we determine the answer to that question is no, our job and work is done?
That's correct, Commissioner Young, that it's a procedural matter that has to go first before we could address any substance.
So whereas I'm sympathetic to what I can only assume is a substantial investment made by you to get to where you are, as a planning and zoning administrator myself, I'm very... I'm very intimately familiar with the statutory requirements for when an appeal may be filed. I'm really shocked that your attorney would have gone to the courts rather than filed an appeal of the Planning and Zoning Administrator's decision to the ZBA, which is not unique and not new, that's the process. And I'm sorry that you didn't get that appeal to us in a timely manner, but in my view, this is not ripe. And when it's time to render a decision, that will be the basis, because the timeline just doesn't support your request, in my view. Thank you.
I'll leave that response up to our attorney, who wholly disagrees with her assessment.
So, I didn't want to get into the weeds with case law, but Ms. Young, yes, we all know that 8-7 says that you can appeal a zoning enforcement officer's decision, either whatever is allowed in your regulations, or if it's not in your regulations, then within 30 days. We all know that. But there's a case that says, since the applicant had the right to request a building permit under the special permit, an administrative appeal was not required. And that's an appellate court case that I cited in my brief, Marchiano versus Peel, 22 Connecticut App in 1990. So, and there is also cases that say mandamuses may be granted to issue the compelling of a building permit. And I cited those two cases. One's a Supreme Court case, okay? And the other is a Supreme Court case. So I suppose if you look at what the way we were looking at it, is that I don't think that Jay Hibansky did anything that was discretionary. He didn't make any decision. All he had to do was tell the building inspector that there was a special permit and that there was an extension. So we're not asking him to make any kind of decision. If we were and he made the wrong decision, then we would come to you people and say, "Look, he made, he used his discretion and it was wrong." Here, there was no discretion needed. There is no question, no one's going to contest that, there's special permits recorded on the land records. There's no question that the permit was extended till August of 2019, and there's no question that Nick Owen came in before August of 2019 to go get the building permit. So there was nothing for the ZBA to overturn. All Jay had to do was tell the building inspector, "There's a special permit, they have an extension, they can get the permit." So that's why we proceeded that way.
So thank you for the clarification. At the end of Attorney Sullivan's memo, she identifies that the judge did not give you any further extension than was otherwise provided with the statutory timeline, and therefore, in Attorney Sullivan's opinion, one that I share, your appeal was not filed in a ripe manner. I just talked about, we're not going to, I don't perceive we're going to be needing to discuss the substance, but since we continue to talk about the substance for the record, I believe Mr. Hibansky made the right decision. But I think the question should be narrowed to whether or not this is timely filed. I think you keep avoiding that question, and I think Attorney Sullivan tried to give you the extra month so you could frame that question. I agree with her summary that I don't believe you did, and I once again go on the record for saying this is not appropriately, in my view, before the Zoning Board of Appeals. Thank you.
I understand your logic, I do. But if that were, if that were the judge's decision, if he were to follow your logic, then he would just say, "For the foregoing reasons, the motion to dismiss is granted." And I would lose. Right? He doesn't have to say, "Without prejudice, oh, and because you didn't, and because you didn't, you exhausted your administrative remedies, it should be made without prejudice." He wouldn't say all those things. He would just say, "Sorry, you lose."
So I can appreciate you think it's appropriate to challenge Mr. Hibansky's decision, but I would warn you that I'm sure this will end up in court again in some venue, that substituting your judgment for what the judge would have said is not going to serve you well, in my view. I think I've said enough.
Yeah, we could agree to disagree, I don't know what else.
Any other commissioners have questions? Mr. Forrester?
Yes, please. Mr. Bellis, representing your client, is it your contention that you feel in the January 9th, 2018 letter that was written by Mr. Hibansky to Mr. Owen, in which he indicated the new deadline to obtain a building permit for the project is August 19th, 2019, that your client had met all of the previous requirements as necessary and all that was remaining was to apply for a building permit?
That was our understanding, yes.
And at no point in time is there any correspondence that indicates from the Planning and Zoning Administrator that there was a failure to submit site plans as required?
No, it's, no, there was not, and it was even more ironic. The commission was good enough to, in their original decision, they had, I think it was a $50,000 bond, and they said, "You know what? We were wrong about that, we'll strike that." So they took that out. And I said, "And I thanked them," and so we assumed everything was going along to the point where we could just get a building permit and now didn't even have to post that bond.
So during that process, you were under the assumption that you were doing everything within a timely fashion and within the scope and of the requirements as necessary? Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Thank you. Question through you, Mr. Chairman, to our attorney. If it is, it is correct that in your memo to us, you wrote that the petitioner did not appeal to the Board within 30 days as required by statute, and therefore, Mr. Hibansky's denial is now final and unreviewable. Is that your, that's your statement, correct? If it's unreviewable, why is it on our agenda?
It's on your agenda, as I mentioned last time, because there have been a number of situations where staff have made decisions and then the court has suggested that the commission or the Board make the decision as to whether or not something is appropriately on an, on an agenda, or should be put on an agenda.
So it's your position that the administration had the right not to put it on the agenda, but chose to do so, and therefore, is an error?
No, that the administrator is, can look to the Board to make the decision as to whether or not procedurally it should move forward. I mean, what the court said to Attorney Bellis is, "You're in the wrong place because you had an administrative remedy that you didn't exercise." So the court didn't tell the ZBA to, you know, or the administrator to issue a permit. He said, you know, "You had an avenue that you were supposed to pursue that you did not, so, you know, don't ask for relief from the court."
Was your office ever contacted prior to this item being put on the agenda to render an opinion as to whether or not it was reviewable?
Reviewable by, I, my opinion is that it was appropriately given to the Zoning Board of Appeals to make a decision as to whether it should move forward.
So then, maybe my question is more of the language that's used. You're stating it's unreviewable. That would lead me to believe that it's unreviewable by this Board or by any other entity, other than maybe in court. So when you're saying it's unreviewable, the denial is now final and unreviewable, it gets me back to my original question with why it's on our agenda. Because that, it seems that there's been a lot of confusion projected by the town administration towards the petitioner. And there's confusion in terms of my mind as to, if it's the position of our attorney, that it is unreviewable, so why are we reviewing it? At this point in time, I believe that'd be a moot discussion from the standpoint, we've already gone through three public hearings, and continue to discuss this. So I'm just confused as to why we are at this stage and then we have the term or the phrase that it's unreviewable, when in fact, we are reviewing his actions.
So the, the, the decision of the administrator would have been reviewable had a timely filing been made. So you have the right to review the decision of an administrator, but that filing needs to be made in a timely manner. And that's the problem here. It's a very early procedural decision that he did not make a timely filing to ask for the review of the decision that the administrator made.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
As a point of clarification, the questions just asked by Commissioner Forrester were ones that I had raised at the last meeting. Why is this in front of us if it's not timely? What are we doing and why is it here? And again, as Attorney Sullivan has described, it was, we were informed at the last meeting that the town administration determined better that the elected officials render a decision on timeliness, rather than letting another decision be made by staff that could be appealable to whom? To us. So it was explained, we were requested to determine whether or not this was timely filed, which gave Attorney Bellis an opportunity to refine his.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. This is the point of the public hearing, open for question and answer, not dissertation. Is there a question in there somewhere, please?
It wasn't a question, I was trying to clarify that I shared your opinion about the.
Well, I understand that, but the point, the time for clarification is not during question and answer of a public hearing. The time for that is during the administrative session, if I, if I would say from my standpoint. And, and I'll be very frank as to why I asked that, because this has been a very fluid case. As we see, there's still documentation being presented. I wanted to make sure that we were very clear that what was on the last record is not changed to today. So that was the purpose of my question. But this is not a, this is a time for questions, that's correct, not comment. Comment is in the administrative session. Thank you.
Chairman, would you like me to refrain? I will.
Yes, please. And I, you know, I'd like to say too, at the last meeting, I shared some of your concerns. That's why I'd asked to be at tables, because I was confused. I even said, "Well, why is this here if we're not supposed to hear it?" So I'm still confused as to what the hell we're doing with this thing.
Any other commissioners have questions? Commissioner Young.
So that I may put it in the form of a question, I appreciate Mr. Forrester giving me that guidance. We've brought out Mr. Hibansky on more than one occasion and have not heard from him directly. I wonder if he would like to confirm on the record that he has reviewed the memorandum put forth by Attorney Sullivan and concurs with its conclusions.
Mr. Hibansky, would you like to address that?
Good evening, Jay Hibansky, Towne of Stratford, Planning and Zoning Administrator, 336 North Park Avenue, Easton, Connecticut. I have had the opportunity to review the memorandum presented by Attorney Bellis, as well as the memorandum in response presented by Attorney Sullivan, and I concur and agree with the timeline and facts that were presented by Attorney Sullivan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Hibansky. Commissioners, any other questions? Hearing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wish to speak in favor? Anyone wish to speak against? Anyone wish to speak against this petition? Hearing none, what is the commissioner's pleasure? Oh, Mr. Florrick, Attorney Florrick?
Good evening, Alexander Florrick. My law office is at 2885 Main Street. Usually, I'm sitting up there with you guys, but tonight, since I represented the zoning commission on this very 11-unit condominium, and also represented Mr. Hibansky, when the applicant brought a mandamus action against him, you have an independent legal counsel here for you. I just wanted to make sure that the Judge Radcliffe's decision in the zoning commission matter is in the record here. I believe Dan posted all of this stuff on the online Land Use Board Meetings webpage, so it should be in the record. However, I represented the zoning commission, as I just noted, when they denied the applicant's extension to submit final plans. And I would just note that Judge Radcliffe specifically found that final plans were not submitted or approved, and upheld the zoning commission's decision in that case. I have one copy of Judge Radcliffe's decision. Judge Radcliffe, as I just noted, upheld the zoning commission's decision not to grant an extension, because he found that final plans were not submitted and approved. The zoning regulation at the time required those final plans to be submitted and approved. So even if you believe the applicant saying that they submitted the final plans, they clearly were never approved by the zoning commission. Any questions in regards to the zoning commission case or the mandamus action against Jay? I'm, I'm happy to answer it.
Commissioners, any questions of Attorney Florrick?
Mr. Florrick, quick question. Just administrative, there's five copies here. When you start saying submitted for the record, is one supposed to go to the secretary? Shouldn't there be six?
Sure, I can, I can get another copy if you guys want one.
No, absolutely. No.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Young?
So that I frame it in the form of a question, I feel confident that I know what question is before this Board, and while the record is still open, I appeal to my fellow members to make use of the attorneys in the room, should you have any questions that you still require answering as far as process, while you have the opportunity to ask them. Thank you.
Well, let me just add, we have to make use of all the attorneys in the room. So who we believe, who we, it's really not a matter of who we believe or don't believe, but it's just that every time we, we come across this, more and more, more and more stuff gets entered. I'm still not sure if we're supposed to be here in this or not. So that's where I stand. I said this last month, I'm still not quite sure why we're even here, or if we should be here. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Hearing none, what is the commissioner's pleasure on the public portion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close by Mr. Forrester. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Young. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the public portion for this is closed. All right. Commissioner Streets, would you please read the Robin Lane into the record?
Annette Streets for the record. 735 Robin Lane, the petition of Anthony Verucio, seeking a site plan review and variance of Section 4.1.6.14(c)(3) to extend the maximum of 25% of the total livable floor area of the residence to allow for the establishment of an accessory-in-law basement apartment incidental to a single-family dwelling in an RS3 zone. The hardship being 25% of the livable floor area is equal to 310 square feet, which is under the minimum required of 400 square feet for an accessory apartment.
Thank you, Commissioner Streets. Just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Anthony Verucio. I live at 735 Robin Lane, Stratford, Connecticut. Okay. Okay. So, good afternoon to all of you. As I mentioned, I'm the owner and petitioner of 735 Robin Lane, Stratford, Connecticut. My petition, as was mentioned, was to review the variance of code over there of 4.1.6.14(c)(3) to exceed the maximum of 25% for an in-law's apartment. I'm asking that to create an in-law's apartment in the basement, so I'm not expanding the footprint of the house. I'm just using the basement itself to create an in-law's apartment for my parents. Fortunately, they got to the point where they need assistance, so they have to come and live with me. I wanted to create something that would be similar to what they're living in, and also that they're comfortable, so they can have their own separate dwelling at the same time while I'm, me and my wife are living upstairs, that we can render assistance to them. Once again, it won't change the footprint of the house, it's the basement, and everything will be obviously constructed in a way that would be appropriate to town regulations and for their comfort of living. I have the pictures that were requested or that I need to submit about the permit that's posted outside, so I can submit that. Thank you. Yes, I am Donham. Yes.
Questions from commissioners? Commissioner Young?
I think my question will be for Mr. Brennan. Mr. Brennan, I'm looking at your comments dated November 24, 2021, where you summarize the application and identify that the question before us is whether or not we feel this is too intense, the conclusion. Prior to that, you described what the standards are, and I just wanted to make sure I understood what you were describing to us. If I understand correctly, please confirm. If this were limited to what is allowed, the 25% of the total, in fact, the planning and zoning office would not be able to grant that because it wouldn't meet the minimum standards for what is an allowable dwelling unit size? Is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct.
So if one was wanting to find support for this application, could a hardship be recognized as an unsafe condition to require them to come into compliance with a very small apartment that doesn't comply with building code requirements?
Yes, it could be looked at like that.
That's the extent of my questions. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions? Hearing none, anyone wish to speak in favor of this petition? Again, anyone wish to speak in favor? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition? Hearing none, what is the commissioner's pleasure to close?
Motion to close the public hearing on this application.
Mr. Forrester, is there a second? Second, Ms. Young, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public portion is closed. Mr. Forrester, would you read the Washington Parkway into the record, please?
Certainly. Petition number two under new items, 451 Washington Parkway, the petition of Noah and Catherine Goldberg, seeking a site plan review and variances of Section 4.2 to expand the maximum building coverage from the required 25% to 28.6% and side yard setback from 10 feet to 9.6 feet to construct a rear addition and deck incidental to a single-family in an RS4 zone. The hardship is the size and the shape of the lot, and the original placement of the house makes it difficult to reasonably expand in accordance with the regulations.
Thank you, Commissioner Forrester.
My name is Brian Buckley, 59 Wig Hill Road, Chester, Connecticut, and I'm here because I am the person that developed the architectural design of this addition. We are asking for two variances tonight, both under Section 4.2, side yard and coverage. We'll talk about the, the side yard first. The existing house is 9.6 feet from the side yard setback, five inches into the setback. It is our desire to continue the existing line of the house, 35 feet to the rear, 14.6 feet inside of that side yard setback. The property lines on all sides are very well screened, and we feel that the, this encroachment that we're asking for is indistinguishable. Five inches in the context of the existing building will not be noticed. The second is the building coverage. We're asking to go from 25 to 28.6 over the maximum coverage, which is 207 square feet. Due to the size of the lot and the, the existing placement of the house, whether it was placed there before or after zoning, if it was before, then it was made non-compliant. If it was after, it was placed there illegally. The deck and the stairs to get to grade, and the, because the, the rear of the house is a half a story above the grade, the access to the basement is actually a walkout from the existing basement. 68% of the overall coverage is the small deck and the stairs that go down to grade. Another thing that increases the actual coverage is the Bilco door, which replaces that access to the basement from the grade, and that is not living area. So in keeping with the intent of zoning, I think that this is an unusual condition. Number one is because of the, the, the amount that we're asking for, and we did try to limit the amount of variance that we're asking for. We've taken a reasonable-sized deck that is accessible from the first floor, and we did not expand it. We've replaced it with a grade-level patio, which is not considered coverage. As I said before, all of the boundaries of this property, along with many other properties in very close proximity, because of the size, have really cordoned off their, their lots, which makes the very small variance application that we're asking for is in no way visible. Everything is in the backyard. It does not impact the appearance of the existing house from the road, and so I think that, I believe that this is in keeping with the intent of zoning. We are not, well, let me, let me put it this way, the, you're, what is legally required, unusual condition is not generally encountered within that zoning district. That district is very large, so I think that the hardship is also, as I said before, the size of the lot, because the difference between 25 and 28 point, I'm sorry, 28 point whatever, 207 square feet is actually a hardship because of the size of the lot. This house could exist in that district if it was just 207, this addition could exist if that lot was 207 square feet larger. So it is our opinion that, number one, we've tried to stay as close within the concept of zoning, which is, which is not overbuilding, and we feel that the, the 14 plus, I'm sorry, I have to go back to my notes, the 14.6 and the 100, and the 207 square feet is certainly keeping with the intent of zoning, that not to overbuild a district. I brought some architecturals, you have them there?
Yeah, that's what you gave us. What's up there, we have in the packet, correct?
Yes, I just always bring them. I'm, I'm wearing two hats here. Usually I don't present, I, I present architecturals, so I brought them just in case you had any, any questions.
Actually, a lot of times, we don't get this much information, so you did a good job.
Okay.
Commissioners, have any questions? Mr. Young, Mr. Doolan?
I concur with the chairman, very nice and comprehensive presentation, thank you. So two questions. The lot size, if I was reading your survey correctly, this is a conforming lot to the, what is required for lot size in your zoning district?
Yes, it is.
But it's the shape that is challenging?
It's the, the, well, in, in terms of the side yard setback, it is that, I mean, we, it's going to be very difficult to actually get back there and excavate for an addition. Okay? The, the size of the lot, yes, is in keeping with the regulations for the district, but my argument there is that it's not typical, it's typical of the close neighborhood, but it's not typical of the zone in itself. There are a lot of, of properties in that zone that are much larger, and so as far as the coverage, 207 square feet, I believe is reasonable.
I think you had me at lot shape, but I'm just one member. My second question, the existing condition that modestly encroaches into the setback, how did that come to be, if you know?
I, I have to admit that I did not research when the house was built and when zoning was initiated in this, in the town. So I didn't, I don't know if the zoning made this house not, that setback non-compliant, or if there was zoning, it was set back there, and it was.
I understand.
It was obviously non-compliant.
Unknown to you, I'll ask Mr. Brennan if he knows, and if he doesn't, then we'll let it go.
You can shed some light on this. Just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Noah Goldberg, and I live at the residence 451 Washington Parkway. All I know is the sheet that I have, the house was built in 1922, so that's the only information I have there, I don't know otherwise.
Yeah, that confirms what I found, which was nothing on the land records recorded for variances. I believe the house was constructed before our zoning regulations came into place.
So pre-existing non-conforming?
Correct.
Thank you both, and thank you all. No other questions from me.
Chris Doolan, for the record, I just, were the neighbors notified of the?
Yes.
The building here, and they were all okay with it?
Yes, and I believe that the, the proof of mailings were submitted.
Okay. And I guess I know it's doing the addition, there isn't much space, so how are you going to get back there?
I'm sorry?
How are you going to get the equipment back there, too?
Well, it's going to be, it's going to be difficult, but that's, that's up to the contractor.
That's right.
The excavation, and, and I know.
You're the architect. I shouldn't ask that.
Variance cannot be financial, so they're going to have to go back there with a very small excavator.
Yeah, okay.
And a very small truck to take out the.
Yeah, that's fine.
The dirt.
Thank you.
I did have a question for the zoning officer. In where I live, up in Chester, I do a lot of work in Saybrook, and they say that a, if a, if a patio is larger, is taller than six inches off the ground, it is considered coverage. In Saybrook, they say from the existing grade, so if you were to take, and this is what may happen, to take the material instead of taking it off-site, is to spread it around the, the backyard. So if where the patio is, is six inches above the existing ground, then it is coverage, but your regulations do not make that stipulation. So grading in that area is not going to be significant. All construction will be done in a way that silt fence, or there will be no erosion that will leave the site until the project is done and the, and the, the ground is stabilized.
Any other commissioners have questions? Anyone wish to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wish to speak in favor? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Hearing none, what's the commissioner's pleasure?
Motion to close the public hearing on this application.
Motion to close by Commissioner Forrester, second by Commissioner Doolan, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried unanimously.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your consideration. Have a good night.
Entertainer motion to close the public portion?
Second.
Motion to close, second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. First item is 725, 735, and 771 Barnum Avenue Cut Off, what is your pleasure? Motion by Commissioner Young to remove off the table, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Forrester, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Off the table, open for discussion. Commissioners, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a quick question. I notice under the original agenda, administrative items number one, is this property, is this any different from the administrative session work agenda? Or?
It's one and the same.
Okay. Because I'm just, we, we closed this one, and now we're over here, so I'm wondering if we ain't left that hanging.
Oh, that too. I think we're.
Mr. Brennan, do you have a?
The, the work agenda portion of it is an erosion and sediment control approval, which is administrative, so once, once the commission votes on, on the public hearing agenda, it can be moved to the erosion control.
Okay, I was just curious as to why it was on the public hearing, yeah, the notice of the public hearing agenda, it's page two, and I'm wondering what, why it's there, and, you know, I understand, I just want to make sure that we're not leaving something hanging from the public agenda. All right, thank you.
All right, back, back to Barnum Avenue Cut Off, Commissioner Young?
So I'm grateful that with the additional time offered to the applicant, he and his client found their way to meet with the neighbors, and we heard from that neighbor that they are more satisfied now than they were before. So speaking for myself, that will allow me to sleep better at night. I appreciate that Attorney Knuff once again addressed my concern about, is he in the right forum with his question? And I do understand that different communities approach these questions regarding text amendments versus variances differently. And I do understand that different communities approach these questions regarding text amendments versus variances differently. So, I'm satisfied and would make the motion to grant the application with the hardship as cited by the applicant, as listed on the agenda. The strict application of these regulations would cause exceptional difficulty, unusual hardship, unnecessary to the general purpose of the zoning regulations, and will deprive the applicants of the reasonable use of the properties. I hope someone will second my motion.
All right, we have a motion on the table to grant the petition. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Streets. Any discussion on the motion to accept? Hearing none. Commissioner Doolin? Either yes or no for, for the first, for Barnum Avenue Cut Off. Yes means it's approved, no means it's not. Commissioner Young?
Yeah.
Commissioner Streets?
Yeah.
Commissioner Forrester?
I have a little problems with my button over here. It keeps flashing green for some reason. Before I vote, question to you, to the administrator through you. Does this require a supermajority, four one, or is a three-two satisfactory?
Four one to grant a variance. Part is four votes.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, granted. All right, the second item is 170 Orrn Oak Lane. What is your- Thank you. What is your pleasure?
Mary Young, motion to take it off the table?
Motion by Mrs. Young. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Streets. All right, the motion is to take it off the table. Commissioner Forrester?
No.
Commissioner Doolin? Commissioner Young?
I'm sorry, was there a motion for- Oh, I'm sorry, we're still taking things off the table?
It either yes is to take it off, no is not.
Yes, I'd like to take it off the table so we can render a decision.
Well, right now, it's Commissioner Forrester. Commissioner Doolin voted. We want, take it off the table means we discuss it, not to take it off the table, we leave it. To take it off the table. Commissioner Forrester voted no. We don't need it. Okay, all those in favor of taking it off the table signify by saying aye.
I'm voting aye to take it off the table.
Okay. Okay, I vote no. You vote no? Okay. All right, it's off the table.
So, now we get to talk about it?
We get to talk about it, or we leave it on the table.
And if we leave it on the table, we have to have it on next month's agenda?
Correct. Okay.
Just so you understand, you could take it off the table and discuss it, but then still decide not to move on it and put it back on the table. So, you do have the option of not moving the item today, just for clarity purposes. Meaning that you don't have to vote yes or vote no to approve or not approve. You could take it off the table, talk about what transpired in the past three hearings, talk about the material, and then if you're still not comfortable, for example, if you wanted more time to review it, you can do so by voting to put it back on the table.
Mr. Chairman, just for my clarification, are we now allowed to speak?
Yes, we are.
On the substance?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. May I speak on this? Thank you. So, to repeat what you heard me say during the proceedings, I think there's, in my view, no need to get to the substance, although I do support the decision by the planning and zoning administrator. But as Attorney Sullivan refined the question before us, in the wisdom of the town of Stratford, rather than having staff deny the applicant a forum, it was recommended that the elected Board of Zoning Appeals render a decision on whether or not this has been filed timely. And in my view, the answer is no. It was not filed timely. Therefore, I would vote to deny the appeal. Thank you.
Mr. Forrester?
Yes. I do believe that good government is a government that indicates to individuals if there's a deficiency, that we as the quote-unquote experts, meaning the town hired individuals being the quote-unquote experts, have the responsibility to go above and beyond and tell applicants, whether the applicant is a fifty-year experienced applicant or whether the applicant is a first-time filer of an application before a land, a land use board. That fair to disclose that site plans had not been submitted clearly and definitively, I think, is a technical flaw which literally stops the clock, in my opinion. And we had the, we had the responsibility as the town of Stratford to say, hey, not just, yeah, you have until so-and-so to apply for a building permit. However, it is our, our records show that you have failed to comply with X, Y, and Z. We didn't do that. I don't think that's operating from a good faith standpoint, which is why I'm going to vote to put it back on the table so that I continue to review the materials that were presented tonight. Thank you.
Any other commissioners?
To follow up on what Mr. Forrester says, I agree. I mean, this thing is, should we hear it, should we not hear it? And then we had a lot of information presented tonight. I understand the planning department's take on it, but we also owe something to the petitioner, too, to make sure when we do make a decision, we take in all the facts to consideration. And we still have time. It doesn't automatically pass if we don't approve it tonight. And I think that we should just leave it on the table, get some more information, and then move on with it. I just don't think it's fair to the petitioner to just kill it after he gave additional information. Now, I understand that we have attorney's opinions, but the petitioner also has an attorney. So, I think that we have to respect all the attorney's opinions, and I say to leave it on the table or put it back on the table. Anyone else?
I'd like to speak again, but I'll let others decide if they want to speak first.
Anyone else want to speak, or can we let Commissioner Young go?
I can appreciate both the chairman and Mr. Forrester's thoughts on the substance of the matter. But in my view, we don't have the opportunity to review the substance of the matter. If this is not ripe for consideration, you never get to the substance of the matter. So, in my view, it would be a waste of time to review and evaluate all the additional information given tonight because it was never supposed to be in front of us in the first place. I personally would have taken a different approach if it was my decision of whether or not to put this on the agenda. I would have said if it wasn't ripe, it should never have been on the agenda. But that was not my choice to make, and I don't believe it was any member of the planning and zoning staff's decision to make. I believe that's guidance given by the town of Stratford, having been in a position once before of rendering decisions on behalf of elected officials and given guidance that better that those decisions be made by the elected officials. That's why it's in front of us tonight. And again, Attorney Sullivan, who's acting as the town attorney in this case for us, very clearly, very succinctly reviewed the statutory timelines, and in her view rendered an opinion, this is not ripe. I am very familiar with Attorney Sullivan's reputation. I believe when she writes it, she is giving accurate information. I'm persuaded by it. I don't think there's any value in postponing the decision any further. This is just not filed timely, and I, again, recommend that we speak to the narrow question in front of us. Was this filed timely, and the math just doesn't add up in favor of the applicant, and therefore, we should deny the appeal. Thank you for listening.
Mr. Chairman, to rebut that, if we're going to single out attorneys that we know and respect, I could say that I've sat on the zoning commission for four years, several years ago, and I found Attorney Bellis to be pretty accurate in what he does. So, if we're going to play the game of whose attorney is better, we can go through that. That's not my point. I go back to the fact that the timeline was spoiled from the standpoint of the town failing to notify the applicant of a deficiency. And by saying all you, basically, if you read the letter, it says, all you have to do is apply for a building permit. Didn't say he was deficient, anything else. I think that the town, in good government, has a responsibility to notify, and that's why I am going to vote against, I'm going to vote in favor of the applicant.
May I ask a procedural question of the chairman? But for the fact that this is December of 2021, when the terms of many of the members sitting here tonight will be ending, procedurally, what happens in January? Who's going to be rendering a decision if you and Mr. Forrester are in the majority to postpone the decision-making? I'm just curious, as I truly don't know the answer to that question.
Well, it'll be the new elected board, the new elected ZBA. They will be rendering a decision. But if we're going to argue that they haven't heard the last three, that's not fair to the petitioner. You're going to say, well, we have to decide tonight because we're going to have new people next month, so we should just put it to bed so they don't have to deal with it. That's really not the right thing to do in a case like this. This is, this entire case is very, very confusing, and I said that from the get-go. You know, should we hear it, should we not hear it? They presented more evidence tonight. I mean, if you're in court, a judge doesn't give you a decision that right then and there, he'll take a week or two and then give you a decision. He doesn't sit there right then and there and decide on the case. I still don't think we have enough, I don't, I'm not convinced either way which way to go. That's why my preference is to leave it on the table until somebody comes up with something or comes up with a better idea. They have time. They don't have to decide this in January either, the new board. They have 155 days. So, they could listen to it in January, hear it again in February. So, the petitioner's been waiting so long, I mean, if he gets it or not, it probably doesn't matter to him at this point if he's got to wait another three months. I just don't think it's fair to make a decision because we're not going to be here next month.
Record, I was not suggesting it wouldn't be fair or that they couldn't. I was just curious as to the who would they be, and you've answered that question. There would be the newly elected members, who I think you would agree would need to, those who aren't here tonight would need to review the proceedings so they could get up to speed. I do think from an efficiency standpoint, some of us may be more prepared than others to render a decision tonight, and there's two members who haven't told us how they feel. And I'll be quiet so we can hear.
Maybe some fresh faces may add a new to this. Seriously. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's been going on for a while, that I agree with. But I'm still not convinced if I should vote yes or no, so my opinion is to leave it on the table.
No, it works. What's going to change by leaving it on the table? I mean, I don't, you know, what's going to change? The timeline, like somebody's saying-
Well, we have a lot of things that were, were sent in today that we don't know what they are. Okay? Yes, that's, that's one of the points. We should get to review. Go ahead. Is it working? All right, you know why? Because I'm-
So, all the stuff that he submitted, Nico unsubmitted today, and the attorney, and his, well, we got Florick's. We're going to get that in another package for the January meeting?
Yeah, you'll have to because it was submitted today. It has to be presented to us, yes.
Well, I need, I guess, how soon can we get this material? Because, you know, getting-
You'll get it before the January meeting. Dan?
You know, I-
Well, I mean, he has it now. He could get it to you within a week. He has it. So, it's not like he has to wait for it to come in, like with the memo.
You know, I can't print everything, you know, at home.
I agree.
Everything that was submitted, I believe, came from the files in our office. You can always come in and review them in there. We can make copies of them. You know, making this many copies and for every commissioner, it would probably be one set scanned in and then emailed to you in multiple documents.
Well, if she wants a set printed for her, we could do it for her.
I mean, you're right. Go in and review the, and then any questions? I mean, I'm not going to understand lawyer-
They'll make copies for you. I mean, they don't have to make copies for all of us, but. Any other questions?
Commissioner Streets?
All right. From the very first hearing that I attended, the question for me was, why are we hearing this? Why is this before us? And we have, this is the third time it's come before us. We've gotten tons of material. We've heard from many attorneys with differing opinions, and I still am unconvinced that this should have been placed before us in the first place. I don't think we should have heard it at all. And I think to prolong this is just going to, it's just going to be circular. It's going to keep going in the same direction. Material will be given. We won't have time to review it. People will want to see it. It, it won't really be conclusive. Let's just make a decision.
Well, the public, we closed the public portion, so they cannot enter any more material, or they can't even speak anymore. Now, it's strictly up to us. So, they can't come again in January and say, well, here's another forty pieces of paper. That, that ship has sailed. So, we only have to deal with what they submitted tonight. They can't submit anything else. That's why we closed the public portion, so that we could deal with it in the administrative side. Commissioner Forrester, are you going to say something?
All right, the question's been called. Want to repeat the motion so we all understand it? Do you have it? Well, there was a motion to take it off the table. Right, 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 right. So, again, all's in favor of taking it off-
I withdraw my motion and to call, I withdraw my statement to call a question. There is no motion on the table.
Commissioner Young?
So, if I understand, we're still discussing. So, I just want to, one more time, offer, in my experience, all the attorneys whom I'm sure have earned our respect. I just happen to have spent more time engaging in the professional environment with Attorney Sullivan, which is why I mentioned it, because she's making, if you will, a cameo appearance, serving in place of Attorney Florick, that there, in my view, there is no need to be consuming ourselves by digesting all the information given tonight by all of the parties because the question is very narrow. Is this been filed in a timely manner? I believe the reason why you're getting all these voluminous materials from all the attorneys is they all know that a record is being built that will perhaps be reviewed at a subsequent day in front of a different judge, and they need to build a record and supply information so it's in the record. But in my view, the narrow question in front of us, which was concisely described by Attorney Sullivan, is whether or not this was before us appropriately on our agenda. And I think it's very easy for us to answer, for me to answer, the answer being no. And would concur with Ms. Streets, we should answer that question tonight. I understand that's our view and may not be the majority view this evening. But I would, to Mr. Forrester's point, now make a motion so we can move on. I would make a motion that we be allowed to move forward and render a decision tonight. And is that the appropriate motion to make? That I would like to bring this to the point of making a decision, then we decide if others are ready to make that decision.
Mr. Forrester?
Mr. Chairman, that's not an appropriate motion. A motion to make a decision is not a motion. It's either a motion to table, a motion to approve, or a motion to deny. Those are your three options, that I understand.
No, I don't think she was, she was asking if she can make a motion. I don't think that was the motion.
So, I thank him for, again, helping me with the process. So, my motion would be to deny this evening.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Streets. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, no discussion, but from a procedural standpoint, so we're all very clear on the record. Can we have a roll call vote on this item?
Yes, well, I still feel we're not being fair to petitioner by not giving them an opportunity, but we're just rushing to just get rid of it, which I don't feel is correct. Roll call vote, Mr. Forrester?
Go ahead, I'm off.
Yes.
Commissioner Streets?
Yes.
Commissioner Doolin?
Yes.
Chair votes no. Petition's denied.
Are you looking for a motion now to take off the table, 735 Robin Lane?
Yes, please.
I make a motion.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, off the table.
I was persuaded that there is some true safety issues associated with the zoning standards as they relate to the square footage of the apartment, and would make a motion to grant the application, citing public safety as the hardship.
Second.
Commissioner Doolin? Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Streets?
Yes.
Forrester?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. Petition granted.
If you're looking for a motion for 451 Washington Parkway to take it off the table, I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Motion's off the table.
I'll make a motion to grant the application, the hardship being the irregular shape.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Young, second by Mr. Forrester. Any discussion? Roll call, Commissioner Doolin? Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Streets? Commissioner Forrester?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Petition granted.
Do you need action on the S and E component of Barnum Avenue cutoff at this point?
Approval of minutes?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve, is there a second? Alls in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Campsite plan review? That's it? Motion to approve? I don't know. He said that we got to prove it.
Are we talking about the S and E plan?
The campsite, the erosion you have to prove. Yeah, all right, okay. Erosion and sediment control, approval?
We're talking about Barnum Avenue sediment erosion control plan. I motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a second? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Members' concerns and comments. Commissioner Young?
I just want to thank my fellow members for their patience with me and spending many hours with me, and I apologize for making those hours longer than they needed to be. And I just want to, again, express my gratitude. Particularly during the pandemic, it's been challenging for all of us and our applicants, and I think we served the town well. And I wish you all well in your next adventures, bringing you back to the council chambers in one form or another.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment? You? Commissioner Streets?
Ms. Streets, I just want to say that it's been a pleasure serving on this board. I've learned a lot, and I admire all the work that we have done. I wish everyone well, and I wish the incoming new members all of the best. There, I think that there's a lot of work ahead of them, but I think it's going to be enriching and that they will enjoy what they are doing, because this is a really great board. And I'm glad to have been able to have served on it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Forrester?
I just want to personally thank Ms. Young and Ms. Streets for their willingness to serve in local elective office. It's, these days, it's hard to find people who put their names on ballots because of the climate that we live in, and I appreciate your service to the town of Stratford for the past four years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at, what time is it? 7:35. 8:35.